Okay, we need you were here to get you the meeting. We've got to hear our notorious jazz band play. So we have some commendations for you because of a great elephant, Trisha Thompson. She was the one who suggested that you people come and play for us because March is Music in Our Schools Month. So I have a certificate for each of you. Ben, are you here? The drummer, right?
I am the drummer.
You're all getting this free performance at the SDMA school board meeting in recognition of Music in Our Schools Month.
Thank you.
Jared? Kyle? That's what not least. We appreciate you all for your hard work. Their fearless director, Mr. Drake Carcuna. Can you tell us when the jazz band is going to play? I think there's a spring swing coming up. If any people want to hear more.
Oh, actually, we've got a concert before that. Monday, April 6th, which is on Monday evening. We're ringing in Menominee High School graduates, Stu Orfield, who's wanting to play with the jazz ensemble, the Naval Flanders. It's going to be an awesome concert. She's a professional musician from the area. Certainly, we'd love to see you get there.
Amy and board members, if no one objects, I'd like to share something about Mr. Carcuna here, if that's okay? Mr. Carcuna, before you go, if I could just share, this has been a really difficult day in the school district. Mr. Carcuna and the band boosters, the high school principal, our staff members, and many families have been planning for months and raising money and working really hard for a spring break band trip. And there was just a terrific trip planned. It was actually going to be a cruise in the Caribbean. And, you know, we've been sending updates the last few weeks about this coronavirus, and we've been monitoring the travel restrictions. We felt very comfortable with Mr. Carcuna's leadership throughout this whole process. And very unfortunately, yesterday, the travel restrictions and travel advice changed. We met with, we communicated with the public health department this morning. And ultimately, it was determined that we're not going to be able to go on the spring trip for our band and the cruise. Certainly, all of us are heartbroken, but I'm sure none more than Mr. Carcuna. I can't even imagine how many hours he has spent planning it. If everyone could just bear with me for a second. The response has been overwhelming from families. And the response has been very supportive, very positive. And I have to read this email. I don't want to identify the person. But essentially, it was written to Mr. Drake and myself and talking about the tough decisions and talking about how this person is very aware of the decisions and what it's like to make these kinds of decisions based on planning that this person does in their job. But what he really wanted to point out was about Mr. Carcuna and saying that even though he's sure that Mr. Carcuna is disappointed, he wants to recognize how much passion and effort Mr. Carcuna has put into the planning and organizing this trip. He says that he really put together a great eye-opening experience or learning adventure for all of the band students and how happy he is that his daughter was able to experience this in the past and how he's so hopeful that his son will be able to experience at some point before he graduates. And to that point, he says that Mr. Carcuna put in tremendous passion and effort into the entire band program. He knows that his daughter has learned and grown through all of her band experiences the past four years in the Mustang Band, the Concert Band, Jazz One, Solo Ensemble, Guest Clinicians, and more. His daughter's built a lifelong talent and passion that brings her a lot of joy, which is very special to see as a parent. Her commitment and talent have also paid nice dividends with a sizable four-year music scholarship at Luther College. Great to see as a parent adjusting to the reality. I'm going to skip that part. But anyway, Mr. Carcuna, I just want to thank you for all of your leadership. And I hope that this difficult situation doesn't discourage you. You provide inspiration to our students. You provide inspiration to our community and certainly our school district. And we're all behind you 100%. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have an awesome highlight on you from Oaklawn. Mrs. Smith, are you, are you just taking pictures?
I'm photophilis in the background. But at Oaklawn, we call our student council RAC for Random Acts of Kindness. And Mrs. Gorbina and Mrs. Place are our advisors. So they're going to introduce some of the students at heart.
Wonderful. And yeah, parents or anybody else who wants pictures, feel free to come back here. That's totally fine.
All right, well, thank you for letting us come. Mrs. Gorbina just supported us and one of the co-advisors. Our group RAC stands for Random Acts of Kindness. And while we teach about bullying in classroom curriculum throughout the school, how to prevent bullying and how to report bullying, one of our missions of RAC is really to promote kindness, knowing that that could prevent bullying and mean us throughout our school.
I'm Mrs. Place, the other co-advisor of RAC. We feel that a random acts of kindness trip, which we are found random, but rather very intentional, plays into social emotional learning, helping students grow in their awareness and mindset of how they treat themselves, their school, homes, community, and the world. Our slides present only some of the things we do to promote kindness at Oaklawn Elementary School. These are some of our RAC members.
Here are some pictures of us dressing up for org. We also had announcements about what we need to be day one and how to be good friends.
In September, students celebrated International Day of Peace. The theme this year was climate action for peace. Each student decorated either a main rock to look like some kind of a new creative peace sign. It was hard to see from the picture, but looked so neat and personal. We also had announcements about ways to promote peace around the world and in our environment.
Could you hold on one second? Would it be okay if the students rotated over to the microphone? Did that mess you up at all?
We're going to a conveyor belt.
There we go.
And then that way, everybody gets heard.
Thank you.
In November, we celebrated kindness week. Each student at Oaklawn painted a rock with peace theme of their choice. At one of our RAC meetings, we got to paint the base color of the rock. And we had a lot of fun. When completed, the rocks were placed out in the front of our school for all to see. RAC members along with staff also wrote kind messages on the sidewalks out front to greet Oaklawn students and parents. However, it snowed shortly afterward and disappeared. Oh, well, it's a thought that counts, right?
To show students we care about them and they're caring for one another, we have done the following activity. Any adult at Oaklawn can nominate a student or an adult for an act of kindness. When a student is nominated, a few RAC students go to their classroom to acknowledge the student and their act of kindness in front of the class. We then give the student a kind bar and take their picture in front of the BBI kind poster. These pictures are then printed and are hanging on the wall near the poster. If you are ever at Oaklawn, take a peek at this wall back by the gym.
Every year, we celebrate RAC Week during February and plan many activities. The goal of Random Acts of Kindness Week is to change schools through kindness. RAC hopes that Oaklawn students take some time that week to focus on ways that they can be kind. RAC came up with daily kindness missions we want to tell you more about.
Monday, RAC also asked each student to design a wooden craft stick which would either assemble into a kindness quilt. Each student wrote kindness messages or draw a kindness picture on the craft stick. RAC did a daily announcement encouraging each student to accept the quilt of kindness mission. We are going to pull this quilt up together sometime during one of our meetings and then display it in our school.
RAC hosted a school-wide mingle during lunch for kindness mission too. RAC students were encouraged to surprise students from other grades during lunch and make some new friends. The kids loved it, and many asked if they could do it again sometime. RAC also did an announcement encouraging students to accept the school-wide mingle during lunch. In addition, RAC students were allowed that day to go to the K-2 part of the playground to play mingle with the youngsters. We had a lot of fun during this.
Every year, for RAC, we wore a cross dress. RAC students served hot chocolate, their parents dropping off each other in the morning. Many students sought to trade too. We say today we are celebrating plans to work to get their guys to school each day. There was really cold issue where our hot chocolate turned out more to be like cold chocolate.
Thursday of that week, RAC hosted a highlight kindness spirit thing. Staff and students were encouraged to wear neon or highlighter colors to school to highlight kindness. RAC members also distributed kindness challenges to all students by placing them on their desk along with the starburst. The final mission was to complete the kindness challenge sometime throughout the school day. At the end of our presentation, we would like to hand out some of the kindness challenges to you to complete. We hope you accept the mission too.
We love to promote kindness in the community. In addition to Oaklawn, fierce some pictures of us making cards for veterans on Veterans Day. We mail them to the Veterans Hospital in Minnesota. In addition, we're making a huge banner that says "Dance with." Around the holidays, we also made little Christmas trees, other recycled materials that were displayed at the Don County Heritage Museum.
We all experienced conflict and conflict. And this year at Oaklawn, we have really been working hard to solve conflict for peace week by using the peace path to talk about our problems as role models and leaders in the school. We try to set a good example and work hard to create the problems, the little, the small, the all but peaceful.
In closing, we feel that we are working hard to promote kindness. We hope to improve bullying and mean behaviors. We want all students to be a weapon and part of our school community. We'd like to conclude by reciting the peace pledge that we say over the announcements each Wednesday.
I am a maker of peace. To me, peace looks like togetherness, sounds like laughter, and feels like happy times. I will make peace within myself, at home, at school, in my community, and in our world each day.
So in closing, the RAC members would like to hand out a kindness challenge for you to get that at school.
And then while they do that, I know this is a big group, but I think our RAC is some 30 some stupid. So we just brought the ones most willing to stand in front of a school board and talk.
How about a round of applause for all of our RAC members?
Thank you for having me. As always, we start off with sport. So happy to press things first. The regional results were third place as a team. Sam Skilling, 182 pounds, and Dora Jones, 285 pounds, were state qualifiers. At state, Sam Skilling got third. Sam quotes, "We wrestled great, but made a few mistakes that costed us the game." He ended his career with 140 to 16 record. And overall, Sam says that the team became really close as a team and are steadily improving their programs. They got third in conference, which is amazing because they suffered a few injuries, which held them back to their full potential. Girls' and boys' basketball. So the boys' basketball team began playoffs at home against La Crosse Logan and won 80 to 62. Then they played their last game and lost to La Crosse Central, 35 to 16 to 5. And girls' basketball ended their season on February 28th during their second round of playoffs against River Falls. And they lost 48 to 63. But sophomore Shelby Thornton got second team all-conference, and her teammate, Carolyn Schent, was selected conference honorable mention. Boys' basketball, or sorry, boys' hockey, I got a quote from a senior, Trent Weber. He quotes, "We found our stride at the end of the season and had a tremendous comeback. We pulled off our first conference win in three years just before playoffs. This gave us great confidence as we entered the playoffs. We won our first two playoffs games against West Salem and Baldwin. We made it to the sectional final game, where we lost to Somerset by one point in a very close game. This is the first time that Menominee Hockey has made it this far in 29 years. We are extremely happy to have achieved the status of sectional runner-up, a title that we would never thought we could have gotten at the start of the season." Moving on to boys' swim. Five boys, including Christian Bilts, Kevin Leach, Carlos Mesquita, Austin Jackson, and Adam Giljohan competed in the Swim Division Two State Championship. Kevin Leach had two top 10 individual finishes to leave Menominee at the Division Two State Swim and Dive Championships. Caleb Casimir, Kevin Leach, Adam Giljohan, and Austin Jackson beat the program best mark by finishing in 1 minute and 40 seconds. And they broke the school record, which was 1 minute and 42 seconds. And finally, girls' gymnastics. Melody Greenwood and Alexa Cummins, humans? Okay, are representing Menominee at the Division Two State Gymnastics Meet. And also, spring sports have started this week. So moving on to student council updates. We are currently planning Do Me Nice Week, and this will be held on April 14th through April 17th. And this event is intended to boost school spirit and show appreciation for all people in our building. And we have many activities planned throughout the week along with a school assembly. And also, some individuals on the Student Voice Committee are working on items that can be either potentially changed or added to the student handbook for next year. For example, I know that there is a large focus on the dress code and PDA policies. Moving on to school updates. The musical has ended, and main stage production just wrapped up the production of Disney: The Little Mermaid. And they had tremendous turnouts for all six of their performances and received very positive feedback. Forensics, they just competed in the sub-districts in New Richmond, and everyone that competed at that district will be attending state in April. And DECA just left for DECA districts this week, and they took 10 students to Lake Geneva. And they will be competing for the chance to move on to Nationals, which will be held in Tennessee this year. And I got a teacher update from Ms. Ruckti. She said, "Mike McGowan, he came to present a message of connecting and how we are all related to one another." She said, "We had him for three different classes as well as also met with some of our student leaders at the high school from clubs and sports. And they gathered to discuss their ideas about things that can be done to improve our school connections and cultures." And also, Ms. Ruckti wanted to mention that The Breakfast Club will be hosting their annual Flip It Forward event in the first week of April. And this is a two-hour event where high school students voluntarily participate in a large group activity to get to know one another. And we have over 1,000 students in our school, and many kids truly do not know one another. And last thing that I'd like to talk about is our grant program update. The most recently approved grant was awarded to the Menominee Track Team. We gave $250 to a track coach, Mr. Olson, to spend on students who are in financial need and cannot afford items such as tights and track shoes. And he mentioned on his application that he knows of two students who are potentially homeless and cannot afford the uniform. Therefore, the council was more than happy to aid Mr. Olson with the necessary money to purchase equipment for our fellow peers. And if anyone has anything to add or any questions, I'll be happy to answer. Thank you.
Any board members have anything? All right, next is community communication. Before we get started, I'm going to read the statement. "This is a time for board members to listen to your concerns and for you to express your opinion on issues. You are speaking in a public meeting, and your comments may appear in a newspaper and other news media. All individuals who comment during the public comment period are reminded that the information provided this evening is intended to provide information to the board so that it can fulfill its role. In that vein, all parties are reminded that all information offered be truthful and honest. False statements or stigmatizing charges may subject individual making such statements to legal repercussions, including but not limited to defamation claims. Comments that identify students shall be subject to the Wisconsin People Records Law and FERPA. As such, student information that is not directory data as designed by the board, for example, individual student behavior or progress records, shall not be discussed in this forum. Comments that identify personnel are subject to the applicable personnel records statutes in Section 19.3610 of the Wisconsin statutes. The board may inform the speaker that his or her comments are not permitted if, in the opinion of the board, it is not subject to release under the above applicable standards. Even with the above disclaimer, please note that a period of public comment is a type of designated forum for speech that generally speaking has a substantial degree of protection under the First Amendment, including the requirement of viewpoint neutrality. The board typically will not respond to questions or concerns in this portion of the meeting. Please indicate if you would like the board president to direct a member of the administration to respond to your concerns." One other thing I would like to add is once you have come up and spoken and we start our business part of the meeting activist, the audience needs to remain quiet and just listen in order not to make any comments or to be what might be concerned peanut gallery. So I'm expecting that to happen. And if I do see any of that happening, I will ask you to leave the meeting because it is deserving to the business that we are trying to conduct. Thank you. Okay, with that being said, Lenny Marshall. Please go forward, state your name, your address, and you have three minutes to speak. Brian is timing you, and when the buzzer goes off, that will be it.
Thank you. Lady Marshall, Oaklawn Street, East Valley. First, I want to say thank you so much for adopting this new value statement on bullying. And when I began speaking with this board about the urgent need for a response to bullying, my twins were students here in Menominee. Since spring, they graduate from college. And recently, the district has been hearing more complaints, not fewer, and not just about bullying, but also about hate crimes. I'm so grateful that the board decided to focus more attention and resources in this area. I have some questions about the new value statement, and I am requesting an eventual response to the questions. The value statement says that the board will review the district's bullying and harassment policies and procedures annually. So three sets of questions. One, does that mean that the first review will be completed by the end of this school year? Or will that be done before January 2021, when the policy was adopted? Set two, what does the review process look like? What information will be included in the review? How will that information be collected? And how will the results of the review be shared with the community? And then set three, how does the board plan to assess the efficacy of its policies and procedures? What does the board consider to be a positive outcome of the review? What does the board consider to be an unacceptable outcome? And if there is an unacceptable outcome, what are the consequences? Thank you for your time and consideration.
Next, Camden Harco.
Hello. My name is Camden Harco, and I am at 643 Broadway. So I have two daughters, and, well, one daughter in middle school and one daughter who will be going into Kennedy Garden Elementary School in Menominee. So I was here last week to talk about the bullying and harassment in the school and specifically what's happened to my daughter. And she's been bullied for her race and her identity. And I said last two weeks ago that I'd be here every meeting. And so we did something about it, and that is the plan. So today, I plan on talking to you about the bullying policy, starting with the process to report bullying and the policy. And then probably in two weeks, I will talk to you guys about protected cases for people and hate crimes. So I would also like responses to these. To report bullying, it's substantially harder to report as a parent or a student than as a teacher or a principal. If you look at the forms that are available on the district website, the one that principals and teachers have to fill out is genuinely pretty blank and open. And the one that parents are asked to fill out asks you to cite the policy number and code that was broken. It asks you to give much more information than the one for the school, which I think is pretty unacceptable. And I don't know why parents and students would be expected to know more about the policies than the administration. So one, my question is, why is the process harder for the people who are the victims? And two, how are we going to fix that? For the bullying policy, there was a notable rollout for the policy, but there was not a lot of follow-up. I appreciate the bullying definition, that it's progressive and includes a lot of things. But the fact that it says the power differentials are the only reason for bullying isn't correct. And I would like that to be updated in the bullying policy. I can, next week or at some point when I have 15 minutes, go over a deep I can, next week, or at some point when I have 15 minutes, go over in detail the things that I will be happy to help with.
We have to stop.
All right. I'll be back in a spot.
Okay, next would be Wendy McDougall.
Don't start my timer till I get up there. I'm slow. Okay, I am here with half months to climb, and there are two bulletins each. Is this a public microphone? It's good, because I don't talk very often. ... members, administration, and staff. I'm here tonight to commend your beginning steps, listening to students' concerns about bullying, and let you know that the process needs to continue. It needs to include responsible adults, and contrary to what I read in the paper, it's not time to move on to other pressing issues. School safety is a pressing issue of our time. It is your issue, it is your moment, as well as your duty, and you need to attend to this opportunity on behalf of all the students that have attended. This school district in the past have been bullied, and for current students and future students, as well as the community that you serve and represent. I am Wendy McDougall, and I am a parent of students who graduated from the Menominee High School. They also attended K through 12 in this district. I've served on school board committees in the past, worked with your district in a variety of education topics for students and staff, and worked in public health for Dunn County until 2018. I have a special interest in student and community health as a result of my work, as well as being a parent. Based on your policy number 165, we claim to represent the community with the purpose of increasing collaboration and engagement. At this time, you need to remember that you're not on the board to represent your own interests. You're being summoned by the community, parents, and students to address the issue of bullying and implement an action plan to repair the current status. As a board member and administrator, your job is to educate yourself about best practices for school districts with this problem and implement an evidence-based plan to change the situation. Just like we ask our students, you need to set aside your opinions on this matter, learn what's available, and make the required changes. I reviewed policies posted on the website and was compelled to attend and speak tonight because it's not the students' responsibility alone to stop bullying. I'm glad you want to educate students, however, the people in power, board members, administration, teachers, coaches, parents, and other adults that comprise the school staff are truly the people that are up to bat in this situation. These adults are the priority for halting hate speech and bullying. Our students are subject to your supervision for eight to 10 hours per day, and they need to know the adults will step in and be supported when calling out hate speech and bullying. Because of this, you need to focus training on all of these responsible people in power, including yourselves and the administration. There are excellent resources for training for all of you, and I didn't see any resources or references in your plan that's posted on the website, nor in the policy and procedures online. And I also see no reason for waiting to assure school safety and school culture. Will I have to stop?
Yes. If you have that to give out to us or to give a copy to us.
I can. I just want to thank you for listening, taking this seriously, and I also would like everybody that's in this room that agrees with moving forward on this issue to please stand up, because it is a community issue, and you are being compelled by the Community Act.
Do you want us to mail it, Monday?
No, I don't.
Okay. Thank you. Next, Sarah Lambert Freeman.
My name is Sarah Lambert Freeman. I live in 6444134. I am here as a mother of one of the kids who came out to speak to you about the harassment, bullying, and the little kids' experience for years in this district. While the statement and video are certainly a start, there is so much more that must be done to make the LGBTQ+ kids in this district safe. Your current protocol punishes the victims for their hateful behavior of other children. My son dropped two classes because teachers did not address the way to treat him in the classroom. I want to be very clear that I am not putting the blame on those teachers. They do not have the resources or training to know how to handle these complicated situations. Why? Because you haven't provided it. Your teachers and staff have been asking for years for support in this area. Numerous people from our own community with experience and resources have approached the board and offered their expertise, but time and again, these opportunities have been ignored. The failure to act on these opportunities forces us to find alternate ways to give our child the education he deserves. We scrambled to get him into classes at Stowe and online. We have that privilege. We have the time and the resources to find ways for him to get an education, but I know there is out there a toll. I'm here not just for my kid, but for those kids who may not be supported at home, or maybe, but their parents simply don't have the time and energy to fight to find them the safe learning environment they deserve, because this district is not providing them. You have been handed an opportunity to be a leading district in inclusive education in Wisconsin. You do not have to reinvent the wheel to do this; there are models to follow. These kids are asking for simple things: a safe classroom, a neutral bathroom locker room, an advocate, appropriate and inclusive sex education, a restorative justice program, and, most importantly, district-wide training for teachers and staff, so they aren't left negotiating situational patients on their own. Inclusivity in schools starts with the board, but this board seems unwilling or unable to make those changes. After the last meeting, I was frankly embarrassed to you. There was denial that these kids are in fact marginalized, and Mr. Moses, you even shamed us. The parents and community members were coming to this public forum to show support for our children, saying that our being here includes...
Sarah, I need to stop for just a second, just to remind you that this is being, this could be in the newspaper and in light of, just for now. Okay, if you want to.
You were saying that our being here includes you from getting your work done? You are not the, you are the only ones responsible for doing this, Sarah. You are the adults in the room. Please act like that. Make the student bill of rights, make district-wide safe spaces for these kids, and provide your teachers and staff the training they need.
Okay, next, and the last one, if there's any others, Kate Beaton.
I'm Kate Beaton. I'm from Three Stone Avenue in Eau Claire. You may remember me from two weeks ago. I'm back because I see a clean energy policy on your agenda, and I wanted to say thank you for considering it. Obviously, this decision that you're considering making would add the Menominee School to a list of communities in the Chippewa Valley and our state and across our country who are deciding to take more and bolder steps to achieve a cleaner future for our next generation. I also kind of wanted to come and address some of the questions and concerns about the issue of climate change and also the kind of the finances around climate change, and so I prepared something for you, which I really do give you a few more. The reality of climate change is a consensus among the scientists around the globe. Every major health and science organization in the world, including NASA, the World Health Organization, the National Science Foundation, the EPA, the American Global Health Association, and the Center for Disease Control, and many, many more, are all acknowledged climate change is a fact of our world and are actively warning our countries, local communities, and our own families to, of the importance of taking what action we can to cut fossil fuel emissions to below pre-industrial levels. The effects of climate change are already being seen in our communities, right here in Menominee, and sure, certainly in Eau Claire and around Wisconsin. Severe weather events are increasing, flooding, flooding our basements, destroying our public infrastructure, impacting our growing seasons, and causing unplanned doctor visits. Severe weather events are known to be linked to climate change and have cost our country literally trillions of dollars over the last 30 years, according to the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Association. The NOAA has tracked a number of severe weather events totaling more than $1 billion in damages since 1980. Since then, these past events, these events on average happen 6.2 times per year. That's from 1980 till now. But just in the last decade, 2010 to 2020, the average is 11.7, consistently causing more financial damage to our communities as we go on. Flood damage in Wisconsin during the 2018 floods wrapped up $154 million in Dane County, and also in 2018, a 1,000-year flood in Douglas County, Wisconsin, caused $13 million in damage. It came only two years after the last $1,000 or 1,000-year flood in Douglas County, which cost the community $38 million. These are facts that we just can't ignore, and I think it's up to us as individuals and us as communities, as a country and as a global community, to address this. Last time I was here to contribute concern for the cost of developing clean energy. Sorry. Okay. Can I do this to you?
Yes, I should can. Please do. Okay, thank you, everybody. Okay, next, Board Superintendent Communication, board members.
Play was awesome. It was amazing. I was incredibly talented. Students, directors, everybody talked about it.
I was there also, and I'd be great. And board members. Christian.
So, and some of you guys have seen these guys play, but I went on Saturday, my son Ben and I went, and saw power soccer game. And there's a couple of high, I think there's two high schools, still there's three?
Two.
Two. I was, it's unbelievable. It's almost hard to describe, because they are just such competitors and such great athletes. I wouldn't even, Ben plays, you know, soccer that's not power soccer, and I asked him at one point, he's embarrassed. I said, "Are you, could you do this?" And he was like, "Normally." Because they really have to, I mean, they're working as a team and strategizing, and I just, they don't play very often around here, but I think that people should definitely take advantage of this and watch a league game.
Any other members? Okay, you're in now. Dr. Joe.
Really, I just want to talk about two things today, and I want to thank the board for two things. First of all, I want to thank the board members for encouraging me and supporting me with my volunteer work with the radio. I think I wrote to the board members last week. I had the opportunity to participate in the radio broadcast for the last basketball game, home basketball game of the season, and it's just, it was a really nice opportunity. Had a chance to interview a number of students and teachers, community members for halftime interviews, and I can't tell you how many comments I've had over the past year of people talking about our school. And so, I appreciate the board members supporting that. It got to be a little much, because it's turned into football, to basketball, to hockey, but I do enjoy it, and I want to thank you. I also want to thank you for supporting Rotary, the Rotary Club of Menominee, and allowing me to participate in that. I was able to attend a training for Rotary presidents this past weekend in Chicago, and it was just very heart-opening, very inspirational. We had a speaker come from Afghanistan, and she had created a school for girls, and to hear her whole speech, I'm going to try to summarize in about 30 seconds here, essentially, she described Afghanistan before the Taliban took over, and then what it's like, what it has been like since then. And it's just horrifying to hear the stories of what's been done to these young women and girls, and talking about the infant mortality rate and just how poor the healthcare has been for young mothers in Afghanistan. To make a long story short, she started this school, and these girls are now being educated. And they're being educated, and they're being certified as midwives, and it's had a huge dramatic impact on the health of these children and young women in Afghanistan. And that's something that's real, and that's something that our Rotary Club of Menominee and Rotary Clubs from all over have been very instrumental with. We raised, they had a problem with some curriculum and with the State Department. We raised over $10,000 and 10 hours on Saturday to support this effort. So, again, board members, thank you. I want you to know that your commitment and allowing me to be part of that has a big impact on the world.
Okay, Zell.
That's it.
Okay. One other thing I forgot to mention was, since we are in some of LGBTQ+, there are some, there's some info about some resources that are in the community. One is, there is a support group that has started, sponsored by Stepping Stones, and it meets two Thursdays a month. I'm not exactly sure, first and third Thursday, I believe, and it meets at First Congregational Church, I think from 6:00 to 8:00 in the evening. I'm sure you can find that or call, or if I don't have the information right. And the other one is, there is some safe space training for anyone that would like to go, and that is also coming up, and that was through Stowe. Lenny, do you have any information on that?
That's a student-run safe space training, so I'm sorry, I don't have information, but I can give it to you. I'll email it to the board.
Maybe I think I know.
Okay.
It's the 23rd, the 24th, and the 26th. They're all at 12:30 PM.
Thank you.
Since we're doing advertisements for things that are going on in the committee, SOAR is having their bingo night tomorrow night, starting, I think, at 6:00 PM at Stowe Dale House, so that's something to make note of, too.
Okay.
What SOAR?
It's the Special Ed Students.
Oh, yeah. Bingo.
That hosts bingo.
Oh, yeah, they do their, okay, they do their.
Thank you. I meant to say that, too, as well. I always like to go there. Thank you. Okay. All right. Next is Revenue and Expenditure Reports for the month ending February 2020, and that would be Leah.
Okay, you have those reports in front of you. If you'd like to open up the expense by function report, we'll review that one first.
Thank you.
So, for the month ending in February 2020 of this year, we're trending higher than we were at the same time last year. We're at 44.5% compared to 42.31%, and that's for our general Fund 10 operations fund. In Fund 27, our special education fund, we're slightly higher there as well. We're at 52.07% compared to 51.86%, and then food service, our Fund 50 account, we're at, we're slightly less than we were at the same time last year. We're at 55.66% compared to 56.17. Then, if we take a look at all of our expenses by object, and this would be looking at all the funds combined for the month ending February 2020, this year, we're at 49.89%, which is slightly higher than we were last year at the same time. We're at 48.35% last year. And then, our revenue report for the month of February, so far, we've received in our January tax, property tax contributions for the month. We have our local revenues and then our grant revenues that have come in as well. So, the total for our general Fund 10 is $15,124,980.41 for, again, the general fund. And then, our gift donation Fund 21, we've received it in $102,659.90. And for special education, we've received it in $1,442,77.90. Does anyone have any questions regarding the expense and revenues?
Dan.
Hi, as I said, the year, so as we, since March, as we get to April, May, we'll probably be looking at money that is unencumbered, and you already have plans, I'm sure, for that, for those monies?
Yeah, I mean, it's a little early, but absolutely, we, like previous years, Dan, especially with Fund 46, that provides us an opportunity to expend those funds and be able to apply them to capital projects. be able to apply them to capital projects. The other thing that we utilized successfully is Fund 73, paying down the unfunded debt in our post-employment benefits. I would say those would probably be the two primary options. However, like we talked about last year, as our spending has gone up, we need to be mindful of our fund balance and our fund balance goals, but it's a little too early to determine that, but good question.
Any else? Thank you, Leah. Okay. Next is just for information, monthly employment report for February 2020. Any questions? Hearing none. Consent agenda. Entertaining a motion to accept the consent agenda as noted, so.
Second.
Okay, just so that the audience is aware of what we're doing, we are approving the minutes of the February 10th and the special meeting of February 24th, financial reports for February 2020, donations exceeding $1,000 for February 2020, ACES 10 and ACES 11 shared services contract, and the street address change for the Conde Elementary to 801 Pine Avenue East, which will be effective on July 1st, 2020. Any questions? Okay, let's hope. Motion carries, thank you. Okay, action agenda, entertaining motion for Policy A, Policy 432, elementary tenants areas.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just point out that we did bring this up previously and discussed it pretty much as well. If we don't talk about it tonight, it's not that we have talked about it previously.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries, thank you. Entering motion for addition to staffing plan at the ASC front desk.
So moved.
Second.
And Penny.
No, actually, it was either.
Planning.
Either of these two. I couldn't get it out fast enough.
Any discussion on this item? We've also seen this before. Okay. Jean? Motion carries, thank you. Just for the audience, purpose of the audience knowing, this was in addition to the staffing plan, we have a receptionist at our front ASC office who is retiring, and she was part-time and we had part-time, so now we're gonna hire somebody that's full-time and then somebody that's part-time, so we'll do one and a half in that place, and that's what that's about. Okay, I entertain a motion to approve courses recommended to run with enrollment of less than 15.
I'll make the motion to accept the list as it is printed.
So, you made a motion?
Yeah, the list, of course, is as noted.
Oh, okay. And then who seconded it? I mean, who?
Second.
Thank you. I find it interesting how you all jump in like it's a contest, and everybody don't need to do that. I mean, it's hard enough for me to figure out who's doing it, so if you were just saying and, you know, just get out which nature none of it, I mean, it's like.
Your name's good, you're in the best.
Okay, any discussion on that? David.
See, we have five courses in the music department that have to run with less than 15 students. Do you want to just page some of these classes, bringing students once they do a rerun of the courses that are open?
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
You gotta answer the question most effectively.
So, we've got the five, I would say answer your question, jazz bands, yes, I would think those numbers would jump up a little bit, usually Jake tries to identify some kids along the way that would be good in there, with the two theater classes, the two listed at the bottom. Those have traditionally, from what I've been able to look at, have ran relatively light, you know, under 15 or right around that 15 for a while. Exuberant Music is a music class designed for special ed students in our school that having it less than 15 is most appropriate, so that's that, and then base course for whatever reason is just lighter this year, I guess, but many times there are kids that will get shipped in at all times, we always want.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, Jamie? Motion passes, thank you. Again, for the audience purpose, we are, most classes, we do not allow to run unless they're 15 or more, but we do have exceptions for certain things, and there's a list of classes that are advanced ceramics, yearbook two, marketing two, Alex math, science, jazz band, exuberant music, base course, technical advanced theater, acting advanced theater, biotechnology, community service learning, and French four. Thank you. Okay, moving on to discussion items, policy review, Green Energy Policy.
So I took, did a little research, and I had a page on the first line here. I had the policy from Claire, from the Madison area, and also from the Green Bay area, and went through all three of those, and then rewrote them to fit our needs and circumstances here in Manhattaney, and basically came up with the policy proposal that I put here. A lot of stuff I left out that didn't seem to make sense for us, and the stuff that did seem to make sense, I put into it, so that's kind of how I came up with this document.
Dan.
I would like to see added statement that we would try to use our students, the curriculum and the students in as much of the studies and activities involved. This would be a wonderful experiential learning activity for our students, so how they could be, they too, could be involved in this in the future.
Heather?
So what cost would that be for the district if the teacher does not have a training for that? Do you help Dan to, for the teachers to get the additional training that we needed to teach those students to implement whatever you're suggesting?
Well, this is a long-range plan, and I imagine our teachers are going to be renewing their, their relearning or knowing, learning new skills and curriculum as time progresses in this area, and I think some of the classes that we might have in the future might be built around some of this. We already do have a fairly robust technology program in collaboration with technical schools. I think that this would be an opportunity for us to build on, offer our students expertise or experiences in this area, because it is going to be a growing, it's a growing economic activity in our area and in the world, so I think, I think it's important that we try to provide our students with as much opportunity to learn about these things as possible.
Heather?
So, the, in the state of Wisconsin, for educators to get their license, they no longer need professional development or credits, so would this be an expense for the teachers to incur to learn at the technical college or wherever that is then?
Dan?
Well, that's an interesting statement. If that's the case, then our teachers are never going to learn anything new in the rest of their careers, and will never be offering any new curriculum because there is no state mandate for them to seek new information. I think that our, our district would not, would not condone that. I think that our district wants our teachers to pursue new knowledge and bring in new information into the curriculum offered courses that are relevant to the growing economic activity that our community is facing, so.
No, I agree with that, I'm just saying that the state doesn't require individuals, educators, to go back to school to learn maybe those skills that are offered at the technical college, so where are the athletic expense coming from? The state has mandated that the districts can provide professional development, but of course, I don't think, maybe I could be wrong, that they would just be niche area for one teacher or two teachers, I'm just trying to figure out the costs associated with that. It is unfortunate that, yeah, the state did take away professional development for educators, but in the state age, I'm just trying to think of a cost-wise, how that would impact the district, if we're gonna put it into the teachers to learn, install that sort of thing. So that's, that's just a question I raised from your comments, so.
Can you raise your hand up?
Yes, hi. I guess my question would be to Jim, did you draft this on your own or was it?
Yes, I just told you that. I took three, what I said beginning before was I took three policies.
I was speaking.
Okay, will you ask me a question, I'll answer.
Or was there any help from the Board members in the drafting of the policy?
No.
It was all by yourself.
Yeah, I'm a professional. I'm a professional writer and a professional policy analyst, I can do these things.
Chris?
Well, one thing that was hopeful was that we learned in that rec, presentations, that the students have already learned this, and I'm sure that writing can tell us lots of ways in which that this is already part of our curriculum, and so I would like to see that that actually be acknowledged in the statement of values that he's looked forward to. So, we're already doing this, and we're already developing it, and clearly the kids want these kids to grow up empowered like this. How old were those kids, were they in like fourth grade?
They were all fourth graders.
That was so cute, but they know quite a bit about what peace is all about and how peace is connected to our environment, our ecology, creating a world that's sustainable for them. I mean, they get this, we're already doing it, so building on that would be really important. So I would like to see that put in there, that this is not something that's coming out of left field, but this is already part of what we do in our schools to build resiliency for our kids who are facing a world that's face-filled with consequences that our generation created. So, that's one thing that I would like to see put into the statement of values, is that's reinforcing what our kids are already doing in the class. And I can tell you that my kid's already doing it in sixth grade. I mean, he just wrote three chapters over the weekend for his class, thought about exactly how greenhouse gases are contributing to, you know, climate change. I mean, we're doing it, so it's there, it needs to be acknowledged. And then secondly, and this is what Joe brought up at that last meeting, that was great, the place for this to be, courses in our strategic plan. So we would like to start developing or using that plan as a way to start rolling out a value statement about what we're doing and finance and peacefulness in terms of what we're doing in the classroom already, to make our schools really kind of demonstrate what it is that we're all about. I don't think anybody would be surprised to see us be more green energy compliant, and if you think that this country's not going to be green energy compliant by 2050, you're probably crazy, because we're moving there. And so this is just trying to put out of board the whole ways in which we can create a value statement that reinforces what we're already doing. And I don't think it's really as, you know, and I think that Heather's questions, this is not anything that's surprising, and I don't think it should be hard to implement, and I don't think it's gonna cost any money, because it's a value statement that's putting out their goals that we can start reaching for, but having the place to kind of, you know, implement this in our strategic plans would be really important, and it would make our strategic plans look pretty good, too. Did you say that goes in, was that five, or five?
Yes, I, but I think maybe you're not reflecting what I said last meeting. My concern was that we already have a strategic plan and that energy management is part of the strategic plan. I was actually bringing that up as a concern last meeting, that I don't know, that this goes well beyond what our strategic plan was, and I'm not, I mean, this is a board decision, but I just, I didn't like how you characterized what I said last meeting, because that was not what I was saying at all. What I was saying last meeting is we have an energy management policy, we have a one-year goal, which we're working to meet, and then there's a five-year deliverable, so that's already all defined. This is well beyond what the Board approved with our strategic plan. That's what I was talking about.
David.
I guess, I'd like to know exactly what, what is it that we're trying to accomplish with this resolution?
You?
What it says, I mean, I tried to make it very, very clear. We're trying to move in the direction of clean energy, and the way it's written, if you read it, read it, it says, you know, we're doing different things, clean energy, energy efficiency, trying to do all these things, not only for the clean energy aspect of it and fighting climate change and all that stuff, but also to save us money. I mean, these clean energy things and the technologies that are coming out there are actually cost-saving, and like I wasn't part of about looking at Fund 46 planning, just simply looking at saying, okay, how can we save money, how can we save energy, how can we be green by doing proper planning, and when we're doing the planning, we're just saying, hey, we gotta look at clean energy as well as everything else that goes into the planning process. So that's pretty much what the idea is, and it has to be done. I mean, there just is no way not to do this.
I guess, more specifics, clean energy, a lot of people talk about that as a plan too, but what specifically are we trying to reduce that will help with, is it global warming or climate change that we're trying to?
They're the same. They're actually the same thing. They're just two different terms for the same thing. So, yeah, that's pretty much.
But what specifically?
Well, the key, the key driver, the key, well, there's two key drivers to climate change, or global warming, whichever term you prefer. One is carbon emissions, two is methane emissions, and they're creating more energy, basically more energy in the atmosphere, which is causing the weather patterns that she was talking about, the huge floods and all of that sort of stuff, or the huge droughts, or the massive snow, or the lack of snow. It causes weather extremes, that's how the science works. Okay, so what we're doing is we're taking steps to stop that. And this is, remember, if you look at this, the first goal is not until 2035, the second goal is to 2040, and the third goal is 2050. You and I probably won't be here when they get to that point. We might be, but we probably won't be statistically, we'll be dead. Her actuaries could tell us that. So basically, what it's saying is, we have a problem here with power outage, we have a problem with global warming, and we can take steps to do it, and if we start working on it now, and we start looking at our planning processes, we start looking at, whenever we make changes, whenever we're doing building stuff, we go, hey, is there a clean energy option here? Hey, is it gonna save us money? Hey, is it gonna help the environment? Hey, is it gonna make sure our children have a future? Well, let's do it. Well, let's do it. That's basically what we're doing. That's basically the point of this. Save money, clean energy, better future for our children. That's the overall goal.
Penny.
Overall, Jim, I do agree. And I feel like our district is doing a good job when we are in the planning processes of looking at how do we do it better? Less expensive, more green, better for the environment. I struggled with putting it like this because it's like saying, our desk chair, our board chairs are going to be shot in a few years. So let's just write a check and everybody gives $10,000 board chair. That's not okay to me. This is, this to me is a blank check. Let's just make good decisions and let's be logical. Because we don't know what the goals are. We don't know what the technology is going to be. We don't know what is going to be out there. Even Excel Energy has said they've got it 80% of the way there. They don't know how to get the last 20%. So I'm struggling with signing on potentially to something that is just out there. And I think that our board has done a good job and our district has done a great job of trying to look at better alternatives and doing the right thing. I don't know, maybe I need to get a little more educated. But at this point, that's my stance.
So let me read you a sentence here. "This board will adopt clean energy options that are budgetarily sustainable and support this policy. There is no blank check."
Chris.
I guess when you talk about climate change or global warming, to me it is two different things. Global warming is mandatory facts that might cause temperature changes. Climate change is something that's been happening for millions of years. And to think that we're going to effect something that had been going on for millions of years is ridiculous, in my view. Because 20,000 years ago, when there were glaciers in Wisconsin, it wasn't because of combustible engines or fossil fuels that caused that to receive. As you mentioned last meeting, that we went from the United States, part of the International Energy Agency, reduced their carbon emissions in 2019 by 140 million tons. The rest of the world increased their carbon emissions by 40 million tons. So a lot of these things that have been happening in this country have been done because of technology and advances that have been made. And you take a farm like ours, that the things that we do, the decisions that we make, we do a ton of stuff, that water-saving techniques on the farm, cover crops, no-till farming, sustainability, things that we implement. It's been huge, and I've been a big supporter of it. We've been no-till farming for over 25 years. And so from a cattle standpoint, and that thing was one of the things that you talked about, we have, a lot of people don't realize, in the 40s, we had twice as many dairy cows as we do right now. There's not much reduction in dairy herd this country has seen. But our production efficiencies and the way the cows are fed and that has increased production of cows, but it's a lot less animals and a lot more efficient productions down there. And so when we talk about funding sources, one of the things that you noted in your resolution was talking about Fund 46 and using our Building and Grounds Department to kind of map out some of the direction of this project and how things go and that. I have a problem with that. One of the, we asked a few years ago the taxpayers of the Mountain School District to put out $36 million to update our buildings, renovate, remodel. And the fund or the 30-year maintenance plan and the associate Fund 46, in my view, is our contract with the taxpayers to maintain those buildings. And I'd like to see it stick to that. I don't think that using that fund or that source of money for something that could be politically motivated is appropriate. If you look at, at the national level and you talk about the Green Energy Bill, the Green Deal, that's, they talk 80 to 90 trillion dollars that could possibly be spent on that. And when our economy is a little over $4 trillion a year, it's just not reasonable. To think that we could do the same thing in our district and do it for no money, I don't think is possible. I agree 100% that as we update boreos in the district or anything that has to do with electrical needs, LED lighting, look at all the LED lighting that we put in over the past few years. Anything that we do along those lines, we should always look for the most cost-effective, energy-efficient things that we can do. I support that 100%. I think any initiatives that we can do to reduce waste and misuse of materials in the district, 100% behind that. But I don't support it. Making a commitment to future generations, which we wouldn't be wrong to handle this, about clean energy and that, able to strap, come up with energy sources and things to handle it.
Chris.
Well, I'm glad that you brought that up about the fact that this is not built into our pillar five of our strategic plan. They could that explain exactly why we need to have the value statement. So that when we're doing our long-range planning, we make sure that we're building in a comprehensive way in which the values we teach in our classroom are part of how we're building a district that reflects that type of learning and that type of initiative that we're doing. So I hope we can all agree right now that that's a problem. And that if we were taking steps towards being green compliant, then it would probably show up a little more forcefully in pillar five. So it's just ways in which we can kind of create cohesiveness and we can create alignment with the way we teach and what we represent as values. And if we don't do that, then it's very likely that pillar five won't have any green initiatives. And it's really important since that our education is really about our kids, is that we're meeting them according to the realities that they're going to be facing. So even though I appreciate the fact that we're going to be dead and gone by the time that 2050 rolls around, I would like to think that our school gave them the tools by which they could understand that the reality that they're dealing with is something that our schools are made right to help address.
So you're asking to add to our strategic plan?
Yeah, like we said this summer, we'll be adding to our strategic plan and modifying it every year this summer. When Gary and myself and you Matt, what we talked about, lady from, the person that laid out the plan, you said, this is just the first step. We'll be revising it and looking into it and modifying the strategic plan to go along. Now, the point is, is that if we don't have any type of value statement, there's no way that either this, that this strategic plan is going to be modified for the next one that we're going to make is going to be built around a kind of green energy initiative that is the reality that our kids are facing. So I was glad that you brought that up, that we don't have any particular agendas in pillar five built around green energy initiatives, so that we can think about putting that into pillar five and moving that, moving forward our discussion about what we do for that certain part of our long-range planning.
I think, I think you're misrepresenting, though, the conversation with the consultant on the strategic planning. We do have, and that is the beauty of our strategic plan, is that every year, we're going to be creating action plans. But the intent is, is that we have our pillars, we have our key pillar strategies, and we have our defined strategic actions that are the deliverables for the end of the plan. What's going to be set each year are the annual actions to get to those deliverables. So, I mean, certainly the board can set whatever direction the board wants. But I just think we need to be careful understanding that the strategic plan that was built off of, you know, 1,000 surveys and 40 different meetings and all that other stuff, it is a mobile plan, which is nice, but it's mobile within the actions we take to meet those key pillars and those key deliverables. Certainly, it's at the board's discretion to change the strategic plan. But I guess that's what I'm seeing, is you would be changing the plan, it wouldn't be functioning, these actions wouldn't be functioning within the plan. Because in strategic five, you know, our key deliverable there, I'm just, implement energy management policy. So that's the deliverable. And the board set the policy, and now we're going to be working on implementing it within a way that fits our school district. You know, certainly, we've already done a lot. You know, we have the geothermal system at Downsville. But that's not even the real energy management that we're talking about. We're talking more about, you know, the LED lighting. We're talking about changing the set points on our HVAC systems, things like that. You know, through our existing systems, how can we implement the energy management policy that the board approved to make that the most effective it can be?
Yeah, so first, David. The climate change that is going on right now, you talked about like 1,000 years of glaciers and all, et cetera, et cetera. What's happening now started when the industrial age started. When we started burning coal for fuel and stuff like that. The science is just 100% clear that things in the change isn't anything natural. It isn't solar flares, it isn't sunspots, it's people burning carbon-based fuel. We're doing it. Secondly, in our country, the present administration has rolled back every rule and regulation that's ever been written on carbon emissions. They've thrown it out. In fact, I think just yesterday, the fuel standards for fuel efficiency for cars died through the action of the administration. So it really is up to local governments, state governments, bodies like us to start taking action on this because at the federal level, it doesn't have one. And I could go into a million rules and a million things that I deal with. A lot of the federation passed, I mean, as a member of the board and as an editor of their publication, I almost told way too much. More about this than I really cared about. As far as Fund 46, the whole point of Fund 46 is to maintain our buildings. I understand you. So when we're doing maintenance, when we're putting in a new board, when we're putting in LED light, we're doing things with decisions, anything like that. Why not opt, what's wrong with looking at and saying, hey, there's a green energy option here that's going to help the environment and save us money? Why wouldn't we do that? That's the whole point. And that's great that you farmed us stuff. I could spend an hour talking about the stuff we do in our home and all the actions we take personally that we've been doing forever. So you're, you know, it's not just your farmers, it's individuals, lots and lots of people. I'm sure everybody out here that's concerned about this could also point out things they've done. So I think it's a whole lot of individuals doing things as part of, and part of this that is going to add up to a lot of little actions that's going to make a big difference. We're not violating any trust. We're just doing it in a really smart, intelligent way that's going to benefit our students when they're adults. I mean, if you don't want to, that's fine. But I don't know, it's the way I was brought up, is you make sure the next generation has a better life than you did. So that's one of the reasons why I'm, that has nothing to do with politics. This is just all about making sure the kids have a future. I don't know if you ever heard about, I think, I've heard it blamed a lot of people, but the one most common is an homage. But it's the old saying, you know, we're not, we don't own this land, we don't own this stuff, we're borrowing it from our children. And so I want to make sure we pay that loan back.
Anyone else have anything to say? Okay, I'd just like to say that, first of all, that if you notice in the news, a lot of this is very rampant. And even schools in our area are starting this. You might have seen an article just recently in the New York Times Telegram where they have students that are actually working with solar energy and putting up solar panels and, you know, and those kinds of things. And I think that's a way that we're going to educate our students. The other thing is, is I was told by a great amount of people dealing with these kinds of things, is that, and I look at the university level, there are so many things that have not even been invented yet. Our kindergartners are going to have jobs that we don't even, don't even invented yet, that are going to maybe go into this kind of thinking. So just putting a resolution out, some resolutions out, I think just is what it is. It just helps us maybe keep our eye on the prize. And there are little dips in there, you know, like he said, 2035, 2040, 2050. It's not like we're, you know, gonna, it's kind of like when we do our school goals. We don't always meet them, why don't we go back and we start again and figure, figure out, you know, what we're going to do differently. So I guess what I would like to entertain is that we bring this back. And if you want to vote for yes for it, that's great. If you don't, then no, that's how I would say. Penny.
It sounds like there are some people that want some things added to it. I think we should bring it back as a policy review item, some changes, data brought in. Adding a citation piece, Chris, you put in the preference that as well. I think if I'm mistaken, that's fine. But I think there need to be some tweaks, something happened before we actually go forward.
Okay, thank you, Penny. Heather.
One thing you didn't mention from the article was that the district, school district, the students are trying to raise funds for those solar panels. And I do worry about the cost that it may put burden on our district if we do go this pathway. So, or if we do implement what they're doing, so.
So, and with research, I think we might be able to save money in the long run. But I hear in my sense you're saying that, but thank you. Claire.
At risk of having my words misconstrued, because again, I'd like to help Jim actually with this as well because I'm interested in it. And there's some things on here, I mean, for the most part, I agree with it. I think it's a good thing. I don't think this is as big or scary as maybe it might look. But I'd definitely like to maybe form a committee or maybe a couple of us. And I'm not questioning Jim's ability or knowledge on this at all. But I, there's a few things I'd like to see changed on it.
Chris.
And John, that can be. If you just tell us what you'd like to change.
Yeah, well, there's certain things in here, like the line about the United Nations. I don't, I don't know if that really belongs in here. I don't know.
I'd like to see in your first of Fund 46 taken out.
I guess overall, there's some redundancy in the whereas around here that I think could be cleaned up and just made a little bit more simpler.
Stan, you guys wanted also something to do with curriculum or student service, students to help with that? Because you already had that.
I will defer to the committee to do it.
Okay, so I'm hearing that we'd like to, that a committee would like to be formed. Is that consensus of the board, is to have a committee of people study this and then fix it and then bring it back for reading again? That sound good, Ed?
All right, who's the, who's the committee?
Okay, so I need to know, Jim, obviously, Clint, I mean, Clint, you want to be on? Jim and Clint and Chris? Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Thank you for the discussion, appreciate it. Okay, lead along.
One other little detail. Other board members that have changes or things they don't like or things they'd like to see added? If they could give the information to, would that go to Joe? Or walking home?
Sounds good, thank you. Chris.
And if anyone has any specific concerns to get that out, right away, so we can maybe do that next week, maybe? And we can have this enough to look over over the weekend and then maybe we can meet on Monday or something.
Okay, I'll let you guys figure that out so we don't take time.
Just to remind the board that if they would like to get any comments in to get the truth.
Thank you. Okay, next is the Student Bill of Rights, discussion. Next, it's the Student Bill of Rights discussion. Chris.
Well, I put this one forward and I tried to bring a lot of the bullying policy that we have expressed in, I guess, lawyerly ease or lawyerly speak, mention and understand the format and framework. So our kids and teachers can understand what our bullying policy is all about. So I tried to make seven easy statements that are understandable and usable and that could manifest a positive sense of what we're about rather than a punitive sense. Lots of times we think about policy and how it's implemented. We focus on the correctional part for reactionary. This is getting out ahead of the way which we think about how we want to communicate what our bullying policy is all about directly to our students and to their parents and to our teachers. Very clean, very easy. And it gives us a way which that I think when the committee members spoke earlier, that could help us cut through some of the ways which we make people respond to policy rather than to the intent of the policy. And so our intent is good. Our communication of that is not as good. And so this is trying to make the communication of our policy effective for our students and our faculty to build a culture that they can understand. And that really can be reflected. And I saw in those kids that came earlier, it really gave me hope that we're, we're creating an emphasis on how they could understand what our values are. And this Student Bill of Rights is trying to create an understandable framework by which they can understand these expectations that we have for students and our values in terms of the way in which that they realize them in our schools are exceptionally important. And so that's what this Student Bill of Rights is all about.
Dana.
I would suggest some changes. Number five, I would strike the professional counseling hand and replace that with access to school counselors' advice. I think that as a steward, it would open us up to the possibility of being liable to pay for therapy for any student that their parents choose. And so I think, and then in number seven, I would suggest that where it says they are presented with a clear list and I would, I would insert expectations impossible and then strike lightly consequences for their four actions. I would like to also see expectations added. I think that's a positive note that it is important that our students understand what the expectations are for, for them. I think we often focus on, the thou shall nots. Too much. It's important that we have all the statement that we tell us, a statement that we, here are, here's what we would like to see. Kind of like what we're going to be doing with our graduate profile in a similar manner.
Penny.
I feel like at this point, the board is overstepping their bounds. Statements similar to this should be established in the schools, within the principals, you know, at an elementary level, a middle level, a high school level. We set the policies. They set the underlying wording on how to impress those policies upon the students. If we've had to, you know, as a parent, we sign up on care statements and value statements. And quite honestly, this group of students that was here today is showing that what we're doing is taking effect. I, I don't, I just don't think that this is appropriate for the board to be doing. I, I think it's outside of our realm at this point.
Chris.
Well, by state statute, this is actually the one thing we can do. Someone has brought up that we're deemed that we should be, you know, helping to improve, you know, learning in the classroom. That stuff we can't do. But the one thing that has been put forward as state statute is our area purview was bullying. So it's our responsibility. And it was great that we came together to put together our value statement on bullying. And Joe spoke eloquently about the way in which we want to see these things manifested in our schools. But when it comes to us caring for this particular purview, which should have been entrusted us by the state legislature of addressing bullying, making videos isn't enough. When we talk about what the board needs to be doing, it's sort of like we've been reading about it in our book. We don't just have to say that we have good intentions, like we intend for our statement on bullying to have good effects. We have to have some deliverables. Parents have been coming here, well, for at least two years now, asking for us to address this matter. And this seems pretty harmless enough. So I'm not sure if any of these values, any administrator or any teacher would object to. Matter of fact, I've heard from some teachers that they would like to have a clear and understandable way in which that they could communicate what this is all about in language that respects students and that respects the way in which that we're creating a culture that once again, state legislature had specifically entrusted into our care.
I need you to move up, please.
Briefly, and then Dave, go ahead. I don't disagree with anything that's being said here, but the problem in my mind lies, this is what we expect, but there needs to be some consequences behind this as well. And where do the consequences follow to these? I, it needs to be given to you.
No, exactly. I think, Chris, I really like to be honest with you. And what I'd like to see is to take this to the building level. So say the grade school takes it, the middle school takes it, the high school takes it and makes it their own for the students. So it's adaptable to the grade levels. And then to Penny's point on number seven, I would like to see a list of, you know, what are the consequences? If they don't do that.
Heather. I have a child in district and elementary level. This is already enforced. They do talk about it. I see it around the school. They discuss it. She brings home pamphlets, guidelines. So I do feel this is already being covered at the elementary level. What I am curious about is that I would, you know, I had one parent contact me and say, what is the board doing with my student in drafting something for their Bill of Rights? So what they're questioning was, why didn't students have more input? Like, why wasn't it maybe done at the school level to be implemented? As Penny kind of alluded to, start with the students and work with the administrators there to make it then also appropriate at the different levels. What concerns me is it says, how I gather and interpret it is that student feedback from student voice sessions suggests that this is a needed measure. But did they just pretend that to you? Is that then coming back to, I, I, with exhibit 165 of having information and drafting something, like are they just contacting you to run with this policy? You know, and part of that is that we are the last stop, not the first stop with the board. So I would love to have seen students present this, generate this at the school level, present to their administrators. And they come for the school highlight, youth on highlight to present, hey, this is what we're doing in our, our area, so.
Chris, you can go ahead and answer and then Dana after.
Yeah, students have been coming here. So they have been addressing the concerns about they want to see some tangible, manifest way in which that we can try to create a strong statement on what their rights are when they walk into the classroom. I agree with Dave that number seven needs consequences and the student voice asks for that. That they can have clear understandings of what the consequences are for, you know, marginalizing their classmates. So I agree with that 100%. I understand Heather, what you would like to have had happened, and I would have liked to have had that happen too. And remember we asked in a board meeting, it was probably six weeks ago, that they get the student feedback? Well, I can't, we had that student feedback and it just didn't get to us. So that was collected. And so I provided it to the board. And I think that is hopefully demonstrating that the students have been addressing this as an object of concern. And that I don't think that any of the statements that are made here, like from number 1 through 7, are anything that don't align with what we've seen from students regarding what I'd like to see happen to change a culture in their schools.
Continue.
I don't know if anybody else consulted with Wasby, but I did. Three school districts in the state do have board policies that, that address this. It, it was recommended or suggested that we consider this as a part of our student handbooks. And I reviewed the middle school and the high school handbooks. And I think, I like the idea that we have students sit down and review this and give their feedback and input on this. And that maybe that we, the board approves this in the handbook.
Yeah, we're working on it right now, actually.
Yes. And I think that, that this maybe its proper place is, is in the handbook that we improve. I think David's asking for, you know, this consequences. And if you read the handbook and you read board policies, we have, there are consequences in our board policy for certain, you know, actions. And the student handbooks have a wholeness of consequences for different different violations. So I think that, like I said before, I think that there are a lot of, a lot of don'ts already spelled out for our students. I'd like to see, as I said, I'd like to see a positive statement also included. And I would like to see, I'd like to see, I don't know, do our students have an input in what goes into them, especially at the secondary level? Those handbooks, they, they review, maybe comment on, on those at all? I don't know. But I think, I think there is a place for this, an official place for this. Maybe not in board policy, but definitely maybe in, in student handbooks. I don't know if the elementary schools have student, or not.
Joe.
I agree with Dan 100%. I think the handbook is the correct place for this. Our principals and directors have been working on handbooks. And now we have handbooks. I want to make sure we understand that. We have handbooks. But every year they come to the board in the spring for the following school year. And as part of our action plan and as an identified item that needs to be improved, they've already been working on it. We've got some models from other school districts to more clearly communicate, you know, the matrix, I guess, is what you could say. And we're doing it at an age-appropriate level. For instance, you know, for K5, all the elementary principals and tonian have been working on this. And not just bullying, but bullying obviously is a big part of this is to more clearly define for the students and families the expectations, like you mentioned, Dan. Then also have a more clearly defined process, you know, that's aligned with board policy to better communicate that in handbooks. And then six to 12, Mr. Betcher and Mr. Drake are working together. And we have a sample handbook for that. We have multiple samples we're looking at. So I think that's a really good idea. I think that's something we're already working on. And yes, we do have an elementary student family handbook. And then we have a middle school student handbook and then a high school handbook. And I think if we look at it in that way, it can fit really nicely with the efforts we've already done and the efforts we're working towards.
Heather.
The evidence, did you, were you referencing the SAGA letters? When you're saying the students' voices, is that?
The student voice was that they had listening sessions at high school and then I sent that to the board through Amy.
Well, I can address that. Chris sent me this as an agenda item and he had 63 comments that were made. And he, I think he wanted to discuss them all or at least bring them forward. And the reason I didn't do that is because I felt like with our long board meeting, it would take a long time to go through each of those issues. But what I'm trying to say is, is that when those came through, I think what he based his Student Bill of Rights on is some of those comments that were made from SAGA groups, both at the high school and the middle school. Am I right, Chris?
Not exactly. The, the student voices, the student body and the high school ended up commenting, made comments there. So it's not any SAGA, it's just a group. He says the listening session where students came in.
Oh, okay.
But.
Can you clarify what listening session you're talking about?
I had to help. Casey, you want to help me on this? Student voice, it's like the student council gets together and students come and say like, hey, I would need to see this done. I want to see that done. And then they record it and then they send it on to you. And then I think at some point we had asked for it, but it probably got lost in passing. About what students were wanting to, what student feedback was in terms of what they wanted for that. And so that's where this came from.
For Amy?
No, the student voice, so student voice committee or listening sessions started this year at the high school roughly about partway through the year. I'm not exactly sure which month. I think it was either December or January. It's a monthly session in the tiered lecture hall where student council representatives just open it up to listen to any concerns students have. It's voluntary. It's during ELT. Students can show up there if they'd like to. They don't have to. They can submit either something, you know, during that time. And we also have a, like a box where they can put written comments in as well. Then that gets reviewed. I meet with, and this process is still, like I said, it's pretty new. So this process is still kind of getting ironed out. But I meet with at least one of the representatives from student council to review that. She has also then come to our lead team meetings, which would be like our building level communication and leadership team and reported on some of these things there as well. And then we're, we're working, her and I are working on how we want to then communicate back to students, like to maybe to answer their questions or talk about what we're potentially doing to deal with some of the, the concerns that they have. So that, I mean, that's generally the process right now. It's pretty new, so I don't, I don't want to say this is a, you know, literally three months probably.
Yeah, I think it's a great process. And Emma actually talked about tonight during her student council report, there's been a lot of work done, working on PDAs, public displays of affection, also the dress code. Yeah, that committee is working. But Chris, you had notes from a different meeting or something?
No, it was from that meeting. Same, exact same, exact same.
So you got the, well, I, I was kind of trying to get, I was just trying to ask Chris questions because I have kind of long here, but so the Bill of Rights came from a group of high school students. And what this parent was concerned, this individual does not have a child in the high school. But in the middle school and their child did not have an option to voice their concern or information towards the Bill of Rights is what I was trying to kind of get at is.
Penny.
I, you guys can go back to this, but Casey, thank you for what you're doing. It sounds like the high school has a very good handle on this. And this should not be a more people issue right now. Until the high school can handle it, you know what? Barred. Elementary principals, obviously with the elementary, it's a little bit harder. But you guys should be taking this and working on it so that we're not fighting this out. But I don't know. Thank you for what you're doing and giving the students a voice and trying to work on it at the building level before it comes to a board level. That, that goes back to policy and procedure that we're trying and, and working through the levels. You're doing a great job.
Thank you, Casey. I'd like to say thank you. I think I did not know what was going on. Thank you for bringing that forward. I think that helps a lot of people here that would like to hear that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dana.
I too did not realize the extent of what you were doing at any. I, and, and that's, you know, that's one of the frustrations I think we have in the board is we don't really understand all the things that you're doing in this area. But I think it is appropriate for But I think it is appropriate for the board to look at this because it is something that, that we eventually will approve the student handbooks. And we should have an opportunity to say, this is something we would like the schools to consider putting into their student handbook. So I think it is appropriate for us to discuss this. Now, we don't have to, you know, I think when the handbook comes up or review, you know, maybe we'll take a very close look at this. But I really applaud the idea that students are going to be able to maybe have an opportunity to add input into the creation of the handbooks at the middle and the high school and maybe in the elementary schools. I think that's very important. And I think that it's important for the board to be able to express its ideas about what it would like to see in those handbooks at this time, because they are being generated now.
And what I would suggest, Dan, is that if the board wants to direct what should be included, I really think directing it through the board policies that the board has, and you'll notice in the handbook even now, it references the board policies. So I guess I would encourage the board to stay at that level. You know, implement board policies in association with state law, you know, reviewed by Wasby, you know, or whatever, and then tailored to our individual local community. And set those policies, and then leave it up to the principals to work with the students in developing those handbooks that are aligned with the policies the board sets.
Penny? I guess I'm, now I'm going to kind of mirror what Joe just said. I agree that the students should have a say, but I think that the handbook needs to come from the principals in conjunction with the students and come to the board. And then at that point, if we have questions, comments, and concerns, we bring them forward. We don't build the handbook, they build the handbook, and we comment on it. And I guess I still have, I still question Chris, how did you get those comments? And how did we not? I get 63 comments, it's a lot, but it would have been nice to have a little bit of background as a board member as to what's happening and how this came to be.
He actually brought this to me in plenty of time to put on, but we also, it was also almost noon on Thursday, and Board Duck was just about ready to go out. So I simplified it, my collective decision to simplify it, to put just the bullying statement on. But if you want that information, I can certainly have Joe send it out.
But that's, so how, did you attend the meeting? How did, where did the information come from in the first place that none of the rest of us were aware of that?
This is the perfect example of why this board isn't getting anything done. This is really simple. There is like parents that come here and students that come here that want action now. Something that's tangible, something they can understand, and something that can improve the culture immediately in the schools that were coming here for two years. So we put together a very clear understanding of seven bills of rights. Seven rights that students have that can make that understandable. That's what this is. I don't care to have any like more like innuendos about where people come by information. This is really simple. It's seven rights that students should have in their schools. It should not be buried, it should not be buried in the student handbook. It can be in a student handbook, but this is about addressing the fact that students and parents and the community have been asking for us to take action on bullying for a long time. If anyone has any complaints about what these seven rights are that's outlined here, we can address that. Or you can say, I'm not interested in this, and that's clearly what you've said.
No, it's not.
Well, okay, that's, then, that's fine. Then we are all in agreement, and it seems to be that we put together a Bill of Rights. Does this coincide, we believe, with our bullying policies and make it more understandable for parents and students? Does this not allow principals and for people in the elementary schools and middle schools and high schools to make age appropriate disseminations of the ideas that are involved here? So that's kind of what happens, is that we put, I emailed Aunt Amy, and then she brings up her discussion, and these seven things are what we should be discussing. And I thought we were starting off in that route, and that was great. But we always seem to get lost in other kind of conversations. Dan, this is not about making a student handbook. For students, those line up on the garbage can. It can be in the student handbook, but this is a statement about how we understand our bullying policy to manifest itself in terms of the lives of our students. So the kids that have been bullied know what their rights are. So they can say, you can't do that to me. So other students can step in and say, you can't do that to them. It's their right to be respected when they come in here. So if there's a problem with any of that, we should discuss that. But the other things we seem to be talking about seem to be kind of extraneous to that.
Chris, I know that you're a relatively new board member, and I appreciate your enthusiasm. And again, I work for the board, so whatever the board wants to do, I'm going to work at a hundred percent. But I would caution you, and I would caution the board, of speaking through a number of value statements. There's a reason why the School Board Association has a policy resource guide. There's a reason why the School Board Association has attorneys on staff. You know, as the board, you know, even in these samples, you know, like you, you mentioned a number of the different items, but there are other items that are left out of this statement. And if you, as a school board, are going to set something that's not in alignment with state law or not in alignment with federal laws, discrimination laws, as a board, you could be setting conflicting policies. So I would just, I would just caution you to maybe talk with someone at Wasby about, you know, how you can be a board member and advance ideas in a way that is not exposing the district to potential problems, not lying.
Jim?
So Chris, what did you envision with this? Did you want us to make a vote on this statement that this is our belief? Did you want us to adopt this as a policy? Kind of what was your, when you sent this off, what was your sort of plan of action?
Okay, first it was to address community concerns that have been made at our school board meetings repeatedly. Community concerns, student concerns, that want us to do something that's tangible, that affects and changes the kind of culture we have in our school. Now, I'm glad that you said that this may not be in alignment with some of our policies, because I'd like to know how it's not. So if that type of discussion is going to happen, you should leave that to the board members. And when you interject and suggest that there are some ways in which that these seven statements contradict our policies, that's kind of problematic, because that's innuendo. So basically, no. Basically, we are trying to do something that can communicate to the community that we have heard their concerns, and that responding to the concerns in ways that address those concerns that are real. We're acting in ways that has been put into our charge by the state legislature. In this one area, we have got a direct responsibility, because it was so important, that they actually put this in charge of the board. So if there is anything that's not in alignment with our policies, we can change that. This is a discussion item. If there's specific problems, we should bring them up. And then we can do, just like we did with the first, I really thought this is going to be a lot easier than the value statement on green energy initiatives. This is something, and I appreciate daily, it's like, yeah, I like this. Like, this is simple, clear, understandable ways which we can make our policy more usable, right, to our students, to our staff, and to our community. Now, personally, when I look at this, I would like to see our Bill of Rights when you walk into school every day. I could see it on the classroom walls when you come into your classroom. I'd like everyone to be surrounded by the way in which that we respect people's whole body when they come in. That's what I would like to see. But am I going to make that happen? No. Do I imagine that the high school principals and the teachers would participate in that? Probably, yeah. So if there's any problems with these seven simple statements that make our very complicated and convoluted policies, which our constituents have been coming to tell us about, that they're cumbersome, that they're unwieldy, that they're impossible for kids to understand, great. That's what I try to do. And I'm not saying it's perfect, I'm just the guy. I'm just trying to make that policy to be something that's more effective that addresses what our community has been telling us for board meetings again and again. And I would wholly caution you guys from throwing this into a student handbook. That might take another three months before then it comes out. And what are the effectiveness of the student handbook? Maybe something, but something more realistic and more tangible, that can have immediate effect. That's kind of what I was looking for, and that's what I had envisioned. But this is just getting the ball rolling on us discussing about what we can do as a board to not make a video, but to actually address the concerns that the community has been bringing forth to us for a long time.
Joe?
Yeah, I just, all I'm saying is that the way this is written, it may grant some status that may not be in alignment with state law. It may not be, I mean, if you look at our discrimination policy, I mean, it talks about Title IX. I mean, I'm not going to redouble a thing here. I mean, there's a lot to consider.
This is an addition to it, but does it displace that?
Well, that's not clear here, you know? And I'm just saying, if, as a board member, I understand your intent is great. And I know that you want to really have a direct connection to the kids in the classrooms. But to trivialize a student handbook, I don't think that's appropriate at all. You know, having been a principal, having been an assistant principal, I'll tell you, that student handbook is the vibe. And you may, you know, your kids or whoever, I don't know if we were talking about throwing it away, whoever that is. I'm sure there's some people that do that. But there's also kids that I've worked with, they recite it to me, what is said in the handbook, because they knew, because they were in my office a lot. So to trivialize a student handbook, I mean, that really was the board's way of directing the principals and the teachers and the parents and the student. That's a really big document. And I, I don't know, Chris, I think maybe, you know, you should have a conversation, we should have a conversation, or, you know, maybe involve a principal or something. But I just, I think maybe your intention is really good, but how we get at it, I think maybe we should probably talk about.
Do I get to respond to that? Yes. Okay. So, okay. Not to trivialize the student handbook at all, but the way in which that you suggested a process that would now elongate, that would draw out, that would find various steps where this could have direct effect to respond to our constituents in the way that, you know, we need to respond, that's problematic. So maybe I've overstated, right, the problem of burying it within a student handbook. But no problem, put it in the student handbook. I would love that. No one would be happier than me to have a student bill of rights and have it in the handbook. But in addition to that, I would like to find another place in which somebody could kind of assert this statement of what we're thinking about in terms of really affecting the lives of our kids and addressing, once again, a particular area of concern that's so important that the state legislator, legislature entrusted us with that kind of concern. I don't need to have any response to that, I feel good with that.
I have just a suggestion, and then I'll let you talk to us in a minute. My suggestion is, I was wondering if, like what we did with our board norms, how we added that as a rule or added that in the policy. If we were to make sure our policy and our state laws fit this, if we were to put this as another like statement, like we did with the board norms, would that be something that we could do? That's just my opinion. Dan, then Penny?
I just, I didn't know what direction this conversation was going to take. So I just forwarded the email to you that I received from Wasby, the information I got. One of the things that they were strongly advocating is a student representative on board is another option for dealing with this. And they forwarded, New Walburg has code, they talk about student receiving code book of rights and responsibilities. And Walburg has New Walburg Student Conduct Code, Code of Conduct, or Code of Student Rights, where they have 16 that they have designated. So other school districts have addressed this and have negotiated a legal minefield. And maybe we need to look to look at some of those. And, but I think, and any other thing is too, we maybe need clarification on what exactly is the standing of a student handbook? Is a student handbook, it's not exactly policies, but how does it feel? In terms of, you know, it's approved by the board, so what does that mean?
Right, well, a student handbook is really the way to communicate the board's policies to the families and to the students. And then certainly there's some additional administrative rules that are developed to try to run the school in the direction that the board sets through its policies. Which is again, another reason why, you know, that might be a good fit for something like this. Because that really is a communication piece. So I would say that an easy definition of a student handbook would be a gathering of the policies, interpreted, and the administrative rules to run the schools.
Penny?
I'm going to go back to your comment about board norms, Penny. And you know what, Chris? I think what you're trying to accomplish will never happen if we do it the same way we did the board norms, because this board is not following our own norms. So we cannot expect our students to follow something along that line either. I think it's better off in the handbook if we're going to put it anywhere. Yeah.
I guess, I think, appreciate your comments, Joe, about protecting the board from something that we shouldn't. I think that, I still think that if we take these bill of rights, we can work it through into the handbook, as Dan suggested, and Joe was agreeable to. And then have the individual schools, the grade schools, the middle schools, and the high school pull that out, middle school and high school pull that out, and use in their individual schools. I think what Chris is after is something tangible that you can put up on a wall, that people can look at, that they can see every day. I think there might be a way to still accomplish that, but bring it up through the handbook, make sure we have our Ts crossed and our Is dotted, and that we're doing it properly.
Heather?
One area that I don't see listed on here, there's a lot of great areas, is pregnancy and maybe parents or guardian.
So I think it's a, there's a lot of information there. Those are some areas I see that may be missing from there as far as where bullying or harassment is. Parent guardian, like.
It's in policy 411, Chris.
You are killing it today.
Well, I'm just telling, it's already in the board policy. That's my whole point, is that when you're creating a new thing and you leave out some things, you're, you know, it could cause trouble.
Since Heather opened the can of worms on it, there's some details on it. I think obviously it has to be agreeable with what we already have for policy there. So at risk of making a legal ease, if we do draft this, I think it has to be written past Wasby, your attorney. For instance, on here, under item four, respect for others regardless of race, class, creed, color, gender, identity. I think it was on, and it says weight. You get to the point where you just have to put physical appearance, because we're not going to be all inclusive for everything on there and cover ourselves. Which, or if we do, it's going to make a very long sign for middle school to put up basically over there. And I do take a little insult when we have people come here, and I understand we can do more. I think we're all trying. But to say that we're not doing anything to prevent this is an insult to not only us, but also to the administrators and the teachers in our district as well. Boy, I went around the middle school last week, because I had to go meet with a principal up there for a personal thing, which I'm not going to bring up, but I was looking around the signs, and there's signs all over the place. I think it would be nice when you come in the door to have a value statement, a statement. I think it would be nice when you come in the door to have a value statement essentially of this. But I also think we've got to be very, very careful what we put down and making sure it's consistent with Policy 165 and 411. And at risk of making it sound like a legal document, I understand what Chris is saying, because it is not the most clear to kids. I think the way the elementary does it is pretty easy, because, you know, you sit down with your kid after they've gone over the report card and they sign a conduct care statement or whatever it might be at that elementary school. Obviously, for the high school, it's a little different, but, you know, where we communicate this with people is somewhat arbitrary. I think it should be in the handbook. I think the handbook, I agree, Chris, in some ways, it's, I don't think I've seen one the last few years. But then on the report card, it becomes electronic, then you clearly could be put on that as well, similar to how we sign off, that, you know, the teacher signs off, we sign off, the kids sign off. I don't think my kindergartner is going to understand, no matter how much you try and simplify this, I don't think she understands what kind of care is given, but she still signed, or tries to sign it, so. And just like the statement that, or the first action item that Jim brought forward, I think before we go do any of this, I think it needs more discussion from the rest of us, because I'm a little concerned where this came from as far as does it represent our entire student body? You know, for instance, with Mr. Drake referenced the vision group to meeting, I'd like to know how many people are going to it, and I'd like to know if students even know that they can attend that, voice their concerns, or if it's just a way to get out of class and go sit in the tiered lecture hall. Not to discount it at all, because I get it for a value, but that's just my rambling, so, thank you.
That's really good. So I think we agree, maybe it could be the same team that's putting together, we've got the feedback from the people on the board, they can send it out to the three of us, we can just add this to our project, which is to revise and to bring back for discussion in the next board meeting, the green energy initiative. And if you wouldn't mind, and you wouldn't mind, or anybody else want to jump onto that?
Sure. One of the questions is, do you want to spend much time with me, Chris?
We spent over two hours. We have many more meetings to be had.
Where's Jim?
But does that sound like a visible course of action, that you're giving, gather feedback in the same group, and if we must add that, it's the biggest question.
Chris has a question. So what does the board think? That would be a good idea, do a committee to get together and figure it out? Heather?
Can I add a task to that committee? What's an action item of this? I mean, I know there was talk about it going in the handbook or being unsigned, what is, as Jim said, what is the end result of this? If this is something the board is going to pursue?
I do, I do respect what obviously Joe brought forward too. I think he is trying to protect us too from making a statement on this and doing something that we shouldn't be. So I think it could be cleaned up a little bit and discussed, but I think that ultimately is something we need definitely heed the warning that how do we want to bring this forward?
Well, I just think, you know, using the principals and the handbooks is the way to go, myself. But whatever the board wants to do, I'm 100% going to work on.
Just to be clear, since the board approves the handbooks, we stand behind those handbooks, don't we?
Yes.
And we, we basically say, what's in that handbook, we will, so to speak? So that if we put this into a handbook and we approve that handbook, then we stand behind those words. And if they're not following, just as if a student does not follow the rules, there are consequences and things like that. So just as if a student has a grievance against this, then that would be processed too. I think, I want to be on that committee.
Spilling out of words.
Okay, so it's Chris and Dan and Clint? Want to be on that?
You can.
Okay. And, Jen?
And the committee's going to do what? Write the student handbook?
No.
Well, that's what you're doing, isn't it?
David, go ahead.
I'm a little confused too, because at some point we've got to meld this into the student handbook, and it has to match our policy, existing policy. So where does that happen?
Okay, what I think, and just cracking from Chris, what I think is, is that you want to work it out and, you know, go over and see what, how it applies to policy, law, and all of that kind of thing. So maybe Joe needs to be in on that, or maybe somebody from WOSPE needs to be in on that.
So Amy, this Policy 250 2.1 talks about the development of administrative rules, and essentially that's what this is. And it says administrative procedures consistent with board policy shall be developed as needed by the district administrator and staff and presented to the board. Procedures will be in writing, may include procedural manuals, handbooks for teachers, students, or parents. I mean, if you look at 250 2.1, that's exactly what we're talking about. Yet, it sounds like maybe the board wants to do that.
Dan?
Yeah, I think we got sidetracked in saying, well, there's things that I would like to see changed and things that different people wanted to have some revisions and things. I would, I would suggest that the board consider, that we let our opinions in, that we support student bill of rights, and that we allow the administration to develop this and to... And, you know, when we review the handbooks, then we will possibly review that section and, you know, if the administration has any questions about what the board's intention is, I'm sure you will bring that to us, but I think right now it's in your court.
And maybe I should keep reading, it says, while no official acceptance of administrative procedures by the board is required, such procedures shall be subject to review by the board in respect to their correlation with board policy. So that's what we do, we bring the handbooks forward for the board to review. The board reviews them, makes sure they're in alignment with the policies of the board, and then we move them forward.
Dan? So that means that we don't necessarily approve the handbooks?
You would not have to. But it is subject to review by the board in respect to the correlation of board policy. So if the board didn't feel it was correlated, then the board could direct the change.
So I'm not sure where we're going with this. Are we going to have the committee? Are we going to let Joe be involved in this? Are we going to have somebody from WOSPE do this? Chris?
Okay. We just brought this up as an item to discuss. We can gather feedback from the people on the board, do exactly the same thing we just did for the value statement on moving towards the renewable energy, exactly the same way. And then, if we write it up and there's a problem with it, and we give it to, who's that attorney that you have, Bob? And Bob's like, hey, there's a problem with this, then we can be like, okay, we'll revise it again. But it's getting together a statement that we think we can make that aligns with how we approach board policy as a bullying. And I just want you guys to know that this is the one area where state statute has entrusted us, right? The care of bullying or bullying policy. And this is part of that. Everything else, that's in your court. You bring it to us, we ask questions, we approve that. It's not about the cost of academic standards, but according to state statutes, we have to set policies for bullying policy. I brought this up, we can discuss it, and then we can add to it this week in the same group, plus one. And then if we come up with a statement about bill of rights that's got problems, and Bob's like, hey, you just got problems, then we can amend it again. But at least we're moving forward towards making something that's tangible to respond to the community, that we take action on this particular area, which the state legislature has also requested us to do.
Are you referring to State Law 18.46, policy on bullying?
Right.
Okay, the board has done that, and it had to be done by March 1st, 2010. So, you know, you keep talking about state law, the board has done what state law prescribes the board to do. But what it sounds to me like what you want to do is you want to not only set the policy, you want to write the administrative rules.
No.
Which, again, the board can do, but, you know...
We are, we are responding very clearly to requests that made to the people that elected us in the office to take care of their kids. So I don't think, I necessarily wanted to tell you guys what to do with this, but I gave some ideas about what I would like to see done with it. But like everyone had said, we give to you guys, and you implement it how you want to. If we can create a student bill of rights that's understandable and communicable to our children and to our community, that's a big plus. And that's responding to what they've asked for and also what students have asked for. Now, I'm not going to micromanage you and tell you how you have to do anything, but we can set broad kind of expectations for how we think about bullying policy and manifest itself, especially if there's problems with communication with kids in schools in terms of how they understand what you're doing and why. So this is going back to a discussion we've been having for months. And if the board decides that this is something that we shouldn't be doing, well, let's look at it two weeks from now, we'll do some work on it, we'll do the best we can. If at that point there's a problem, then I'm sure the board will be like, hey, this is a terrible idea. But I don't think that'll happen. And this should be a lot easier to come up with than a 2050 statement on clean energy, because this is something we know we have to do, and that people have been coming to us and requesting us for taking action on this for a long time.
So you want to write the administrative rules, is what you're saying?
How you implement it is how I think administration operates. We're making a general statement, right, on what we want to see manifesting in terms of what this bullying policy looks like.
So it's a policy then?
Look, I just go back to our previous agreement, what we were trying to do, we'll make a committee, we'll rewrite this bill of rights, and we can discuss this again at the next meeting. It will give all of us a chance to kind of understand what it is that we're doing and how we'd like to see it implemented. But in the meantime, we've got something to work on. You don't have a problem with that, do you?
I don't have a problem with any of it, I'm just trying to understand this, Chris, because you're blending policy and administrative rule.
This is extracted from our discussion, we're just trying to see if we can come up with a bill of rights that is understandable and agreeable by the board. And then if there's a problem with this later, when we do that, with how you guys are going to implement that, then that's something that we can talk about. This is just moving the discussion along in a way that helps us make progress towards a goal, which is meeting our constituents' request that we address bullying in a way that has immediate effects in our schools.
David?
I feel like we have a pretty good plan here on what direction to move forward, and I guess I... I don't normally see Joe exercise as much caution as he is tonight, and that throws up a red flag, you know, that he's doing it for a reason. So I would ask that we take this through the handbook and then take it back out to the building principles from the handbook for publication in the schools, and try to come up with something that, that way, if the administration writes it up in the handbook and can include these things that you have in here, then we can address these issues and get it out, and we still protect ourselves from a policy standpoint.
Jim?
I would like to see, because it's going to be a while before the handbook gets written and they come out, like, next year, I would like to see Joe take this, review the policies, maybe consult with WOSPE, rewrite it, and bring it back to the board in a way that matches our policy and law, and doesn't get legal ease, which may be a lot to ask. But I think if we run it through you and you do it, because I think part of, I think Chris really says it, there is a sense of urgency here. And I think that by just sticking it in the handbook, that's a very long process. So I would like to see, I'd like to see you do this, my idea is to review this, bring it back to us next meeting or the following meeting, or next meeting would be better, because it's more urgent, with it rewritten in a way that you feel protects the district so we can redo it.
I like the idea. I would like to involve the principals though.
Sure, yeah.
And, you know, and possibly even at some levels the students. So, I mean, I agree, this is a major issue, bullying is a major issue all across the country. You know, we have our action plan, I think this fits right in as a possible step on our action plan. I guess, I guess the expectation, you know, to do it for next meeting, I don't think is realistic.
Well, you know, sooner. I guess, just sooner than what you go through the handbook, because that's, that's going to be a while, so...
Well, and we have spring break next week.
Right.
You know, so we're looking at, you know, at least probably April.
Yeah.
And what we're talking about is, like, last year, I just looked at it, we brought the handbooks to the board in May, and then we actually brought them for discussion, and then we had the board approve them in a consent agenda, just to kind of say, yeah, these do align, you know, these do align with what the board policies are. I guess we wouldn't have to do that. I like that, I like, you know, having the board actually approve them when we have them done.
I would too, actually.
Yeah.
But yeah, just to expedite and make sure we got our legal basis covered, and then bring this statement back, whether it's part of the handbook or sooner, and then incorporate it in the handbook, I think would be good. But I think we need to review this at some point, and how we incorporate this in the handbook, I'd like to see this reviewed after a legal review or you review it, the principals, and then bring it back.
I think it's a good idea, and then it'll be done for the principals, because they're working on the handbooks now, and then...
Right.
So basically, we'll deal with this part of the handbook separate from the other, the rest of the handbook, because of, you know, the importance of this subject, especially at this time. That makes a lot of sense. Thanks, Jen.
Good job. Dan?
Yeah, I would suggest looking at Board Policy 4.3, the Student Behavior Code of Conduct, and that addresses vaguely some of the things, the district accepts its responsibility to create and maintain an orderly and safe environment conducive to teaching and learning process, to staff and community, and, you know, we want an atmosphere of respect and consideration. I think if the handbook is just pure, is this administrative rule, in that with board policy behind it, the board really isn't approving the handbook, the board is just saying, yeah, the handbook appears to follow policy, so we're not endorsing the handbook, that's basically here, the board, board is not, we're not saying that this is, that's administrative stuff, that's, we take care of the policy. So then again, I think maybe Chris is right, in that we should, we want to be serious about this, that we should look at this Policy 4.3 and see how we can pull through that.
That would be another way to do it. You know, but again, that goes back to my question to Chris, are we talking about a policy? Or are we talking about administrative rule? And this idea of creating statements and value statements and stuff, where does that fit?
I think that you've got...
I think, but mine is?
I think we'll do there. One last thing I would like to say is, you know, the people that came forward to speak, you know, I really appreciate you coming forward and saying what you want to say. I don't like your things that this discussion elittles what you are saying. And, you know, I really, really have a lot of admiration for Chris and respect, because, you know, I don't believe in bullying, I don't like it, nobody does. And I just want people to understand that we are trying our hardest as a board to work through some of these issues. And I just don't want you to feel belittled that we're, you know, it takes a lot of time and energy, but we're working on it, that's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Okay. So I think that's, that's good. Do we have a timeline for when you're going to get back to us? Like, I'm not sure exactly, if you are going to meet with the principals, which is putting a lot on their plates, and maybe offer a time for the semester, but we had hoped to maybe get this on the discussion for the next board meeting, but you're thinking that's going to be impossible?
Right, it won't be for March, but I would say by the first April meeting, I should be able to have a draft to bring back for some discussion.
We could do that, and that'd be great.
Yeah, we're actually meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
And I'm sure we'll start talking about it, and then we can talk about it the fourth Tuesday in March, that's our next meeting. And then I would say by the first meeting in April, which is, what, April 10th or something?
I'm looking at their faces to see if that seems like it's okay, if it seems like it's okay.
Now he's going to direct their workload too. Chris, you should get your superintendent license.
No thanks, I've got 26 more months on this board.
It seems like you might be interested in it.
Nope.
That's great.
Just to clarify, it's going to come back as a discussion item then?
Yeah, in the April meeting, it would be the target. Jamie, we're going to make sure we write that down. April meeting, discussion, but thank you.
Okay, thanks everybody for the discussion, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks for the ideas, Chris.
Okay, we're writing on, review early college credit purport request for fall 2020.
Okay, so this is a very standard, I know everyone's getting a little tired, this is just a really standard thing to do. is just a really standard thing that we have this time every year. You can see there's a lot of requests, but there's really not that many students requesting, just a couple students requested about early under the sun, which is great. So this is just for the board review. Any questions at all?
Quick question.
Sure.
Like, I haven't talked. I have a request range, I'm just curious. Like, they put in all these requests, do they have to wait until the first, second, 15th?
So the short answer is no, from a standpoint that they request courses that they're interested in taking, and then once they are notified as to what courses are available, then they can make their determination. And the vast majority of students request a course or making courses, so by that means they are prioritizing.
Anything else on that?
Next, Elementary Transportation.
Again, this is just informational, we have the bus transfer of the Cedar Falls area, we had the boundary change between O'Klon and Wakanda, we were able to serve our families with a bus transfer. We've talked to Menominee Transportation, even though it's only an annual approval at this point, after the original commitment from a few years ago, it does appear that it'll work out again next year. So we're very happy to be able to offer that bus transfer again for the 2020-2021 school year.
I probably should ask, maybe, you know, listen or not, but how many students are writing this on a weekly basis, any idea?
Oh boy, Susan probably knows.
In conversations with Ryan Howell, he said there is a significant number of students who are flip-flopping, but not all in the way you'd think they would. So we have a lot of students who would be Wakanda students who actually flip over and take the bus to O'Klon, and we have vice versa going the other way.
So it was like 20 maybe?
At least.
Yeah.
Thank you. Next, Coronavirus Pre-Plan.
Well, I got to tell you, this has taken an enormous amount of time. Most of today was spent on this, and Tonya, and then our school nurse, Raimi McMahon, just kudos to them, because they're spending 10 times the amount of time I'm spending on it, and it is just, it's amazing. I don't want to get into all the details of, you know, what people are thinking or saying, but obviously this is an issue, obviously this is an issue we're preparing for. We've, you know, we have a document, and we're covering everything from trying to make sure we order our supplies. That was the first thing I did, is I called our building grounds person, said, make sure you order everything you can for the cleaning supplies that we're going to need. Some of it was on back order, but I think our order just got released today. But you can also see that we are working on an emergency pandemic preparedness plan that just kind of lays all the different things that need to be considered. We've really been trying to prioritize communication with families, just to let families know what we're carrying. The CDC and then especially the Dunn County Health Department have been terrific in terms of being resources, you know, the band cruise was a great example. We had a conference call this morning, and not only are they giving us local advice, but they're also running our questions up to the state, because they're communicating almost daily, I think. And as this continues to change, we're continuing to be responsive. Certainly if it gets to the point where it's too bad, I mean, schools are going to be closed, and the county health departments are going to be directing us, and we're going to follow those directions. But in the meantime, we are looking at our processes and procedures in terms of cleaning, in terms of our communication. In the event that we do have a large number of students or staff out ill, we would certainly try to work through that the best we can. But are there any questions, concerns, or advice that board members have on this?
At what threshold would it have to be as far as pandemic or outbreak in order for us to close roughly? I mean, is there any planning as to that?
Well, you know, really I think that's probably more of a question for the CDC. I would assume the Dunn County Health Department is going to be advising us on that. Are you talking about within the pandemic?
Well, as far as I know, there aren't many schools closed yet, but it's probably pretty likely.
In Wisconsin, are you talking about? Yeah, I haven't heard of any in Wisconsin, but certainly out west there are. Some of the concerns we're most focused on right now is what happens if or when we do have a student that tests positive, or a staff member that tests positive, and how does that impact our daily operations? And that's where we're still trying to gather guidance and planning.
Did you check with the DPI? I think I just saw something this week about the coronavirus and providing guidance with them, just had a conversation with them last week, and they were talking about that. So, because we asked about that, was schools closing and whatnot, so I'm assuming you consult or check with them, or maybe you will, or?
Yeah, actually this pandemic plan, I got to give DPI a lot of credit, and also my buddy over in Hudson, this really is off a template. And that's why we need to, that's one of the things we're talking about with principals tomorrow, is we've already tried to localize it a bit, but there's more localization that needs to happen through this template. So yes, we have been in communication with DPI, especially Raimi, our school nurse, and the school nurse's office there. Tonya, you've been doing more of this than me, is there anything that you want to add at this point, Tonya?
No, there's multiple, sorry, there's multiple links that we are, CDC, DPI, that we're checking daily, because they update, they are telling us the time of day that they're going to do their update, so we don't have to keep going back and checking. But it is a daily occurrence, multiple days, because some of those timelines are different. So Raimi and I are talking multiple times a day to make sure that we all, that we're both on the same page. So, you know, we're thankful that it's not here in our community, so, and I will be available at the tail end of spring break, so if something would happen, Raimi and I can also communicate, so.
Dan?
So I have a daughter that's in med school, of course, and I get her opinion on stuff. She said, Dad, there's a lot more people dying from the flu.
Yes.
You know, 32 million infected, 16,000 plus died. How do they weigh this? We have some of our schools in our grade levels almost wiped out from the flu this year. How do you weigh that with the coronavirus and the implications that, how do you make that decision?
Well, I think the concern, at least in my mind, and I've been way too much coronavirus watching and listening, the unknown is the big fear right now. Hopefully, all this work is for naught. Hopefully, some of this work could be used in the future when we have a bad flu season. And then we already do things, for instance, Mrs. Mason implemented, they worked at Wakanda, they had such a high sickness level that they actually extended the amount of time students needed to be out after certain symptoms, and that was on recommendation of the health experts. So we already do those things. The concern with the coronavirus is just there's so much unknown. And hopefully it is being overstated in some cases, hopefully the, I'm not saying you said that, but in my mind, I'm thinking, geez, I really hope this is overstated, I really hope that, you know, especially that the young population, you know, isn't going to be either susceptible to it, or if they do get it, they're going to be able to recover without a death rate that, you know, it's showing right now, but maybe that death rate's a little artificially high, you know, based on who's got it so far. Just there's so much unknown, but what I can tell you is that we're not going to fail because we didn't try. And that's my big thing, you know, this planning document that we have, the internal planning document, you know, so we have, what are the steps we could take to reduce the likelihood of infections in the SDMA? And we have a whole list of things. What are our cooperation efforts between SDMA and both the health of agencies? District communications, that's a big thing, obviously. And that's part of, my biggest concern right now is the stress, and we talk about trauma, and we've talked about trauma a ton this year, you know, what are we doing to try to curb the trauma of our kids, our staff? I mean, heck me, I think about this more than what's probably healthy, you know? And then continuity of instruction. You know, we have the 612 Empower Learning Plan, where all the kids have a Chromebook, but at the same time, we do not have a policy where we would all of a sudden run online school days. You know, so I think if it gets to that point, we'd be looking more at closing. But the nice thing is, is that for the students who are out sick, or staff members who are out sick, there's still that continuity that could help. I'm almost done. And then we have another category, and the other category is probably bigger than the rest, like the band trip was on there, choir trip. What about people coming back from spring break? And all of, and they come back and they've been at a place that has community spread or whatever. So we're trying to think of all these things and do the best we can, and I just want to assure our parents, I want to assure our students, I want to assure our staff, that we're paying very close attention to this, and we're going to do as much as we can to be responsive to everyone's needs. For just a couple minutes, just to look at the ice, pretend I was ice fishing. But I thought of all the exact things. We had 11 small days last year, and we really only had to make up a couple days, and we purposely built in more days, but then I started thinking, well, we don't want to do that now, because it's not at that point, but if it does get to that point, we have some flexibility. And then my, the craziest thought that got me thinking, not thinking about it anymore, is I was going, what if we cancel spring break next week? Because right now, things are okay, let's get those five days in, and get as much full safety in the school year, and I thought, okay, I'm done thinking.
Just remember, it's March, and we could still have, yeah, well, I won't even say.
Looking pretty good.
No, spring's coming.
Dan?
I think we talked about this before the e-learning. It would be so nice if we had that flexibility, I don't know the legislature, you know, what the rules are, how we could use that legally, but.
You know, we talked about that though last year with the small days, and we opted not to do that. And there's so many concerns, you know, especially when you talk about special services, especially when you talk about inequities with access to broadband. We felt last year, the board, the direction that I got from the board was that this isn't a current fit for our district, so I don't consider that to be a reliable option for us, to do full-blown e-learning.
Good point. Okay, any other discussion on that?
And we are not canceling spring break. I need to clear.
At least I can tell Brian to.
Okay, next, Project Hope Update.
And really, this is just an introductory informational item, you can see the memo from the chief of police. I didn't want the board to be surprised, I know that there's already been some discussions at the city council level. My understanding is that the city council is going to take this up again towards the end of the month. If you recall, there's been work, there's been open chairs in the past about trying to work with the city council, trying to establish a second youth service officer. I think the chief, I think the mayor, and I think people at the city level have, really have some good ideas and have a better understanding how we can, as a group, work collaboratively and really try to help our community with meth, with addiction, with other problems by working together. And I think in part of a larger plan called Project Hope, that is something they're considering. So in the stamping plan that I'm going to propose, it will, once again, I think for the third or fourth year in a row, include adding a second resource officer. I'm looking forward to this time having the city kind of declare whether or not that's something that they're going to want to support, and then if they do, I'm hoping that our board will support that. And at that point, the chief will be here and share a lot more about his vision for Project Hope and the educational component that a youth service officer could provide for our school district.
Just for the audience's benefit, you may have read about Project Hope, but it has to do with med.
Med.
Thank you. It's been a long night. And addictions, and how it affects families, and so that's kind of what it's kind of designed to help, work probably, try to help combat that.
Just a quick question, you may not even have an answer to this, but it talks about having that second YSO to this life skills training.
Yes.
Do you know how that is different than the old just say no program we used to have with the officer?
I don't know as much about the curriculum, Dan probably knows more about this curriculum than I do, but it's similar, but it's much more comprehensive, is my understanding. And in terms of like the DARE program, that program's going away. So this will be kind of like DARE on, nevermind.
DARE 2.0.
I didn't say that.
DARE 2.0.
Wonderful. DARE 5.0 probably.
5.0, that's fine, whatever. Just, yeah.
Okay, anything else on that one? Okay, thank you. Okay, items related to next meeting dates, board committees, and reports, that's informational. Spring break is the 16th to the 20th. I ask that everybody that goes away stays healthy and comes back healthy.
I got a question, what is SSIT?
That's the School Safety Intervention Team. Yeah, we could talk more about that.
Well, like, I just, I just, I just gave the acronym.
Okay, and I'm going to ask that we take a five-minute break, it's been a long time, and I'm sure some of that's, yes, Chris, I need to jump.